Good morning. Please be seated. I would like, this time, to thank our piper, Griffin McGregor, from the Sarnia Legion Pipe End. Thank you. I'd ask Ms. LaJade to take the roll call, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. Councillor Agar?
Present.
Councillor Atkinson?
Present.
Councillor Bucci? Councillor Bradley?
Online and present.
Thank you. Councillor Broad?
Present.
Councillor Case?
Present.
Councillor Cook?
Present.
Councillor Dennis?
Present.
Councillor Ferguson?
Present.
Councillor Hand?
Present.
Councillor Loosley?
Present.
Warden Marriott?
Present.
Councillor McRoberts?
Present.
Councillor Miller?
Present.
Councillor Sagman?
Present.
Councillor Veen?
Present.
Deputy Warden White?
Present.
You have quorum.
We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, Odoa, and Potawatomi peoples referred to collectively as the Anishinaabe. It is through the connection of the Anishinaabe with the spirit of the land, water, and air that we recognize your unique cultures, traditions, and values. Together as treaty people, we have a shared responsibility to act with respect for the environment that sustains all life, protecting the future for those generations to come. I'd ask any member of council to declare a pecuniary interest now or where it may arise during the agenda. Seeing none at this time, I'd like to first recognize, this year, we are marking a major milestone event in the county of Lampton, our 175th anniversary. In 2024, we invite you to join us in commemorating the significant and exciting milestone. As we honor our rich history, we also look to the future with excitement and optimism and embrace the promise of the next 175 years. While the story of our region stretches back thousands of years, this year marks 175 years of history with our local government. The earliest record of Lampton County's municipal transactions is found in a minute book recording from April 15, 1852, which we actually have with us today and is open on the table at the center of the room. Today, we celebrate our role as a united federation of local municipalities who have worked together with a strong spirit of collaboration, innovation, and ambition over the past 175 years. We have several past members of County Council in attendance with us today that I'd like to acknowledge. Past councillors, please stand as I read your name, and I would ask the audience to hold applause until all the names have been read. Steve Arnold, councillor from 1989 to 2022, and warden 2011 and 12. Steve? I think maybe Steve had, he had to leave, okay. Margaret Byrd, councillor 2018, 2022. Bob Boyd? Is Bob with us? Jim Burns, councillor 2004 to 2011, and warden 2006 to 2008, 2009 to 2010. Terry Burl, councillor 1992 to 1997. Pat Davidson, councillor 1986 to 2006, warden 1995, 2000, 2001, and 2002. Roger Galloway, councillor 1992 to 1993. Peter Gilliland, councillor 2007 to 2018. Karen Hart, 1998 councillor to 2003. Lloyd Hyatt, councillor from 1986 to 1991, and from 1995 to 1997. Don McGugan, councillor 2002 to 2018. Lonnie Napper, councillor 1998 to 2000, and 2006 to 2022. David Smith, councillor 1977 to 1985. Bill Weber, 2011 councillor to 2022, and warden 2017 to 18, and 2019 to 20. Bed McDougall, councillor 2004 to 2018, and warden 2015 to 2016. Thank you all for attending today, and thanks for your past service. There are few individuals who were not able to attend today due to other commitments, but have sent well wishes. Member of Parliament Marilyn Gladu has shared the following message. "I'm sorry I cannot be with you this morning as I'm in Parliament, but I want to celebrate along with you the 175 years of proud history of Lampton County. From the beginning settlers who cleared the forests and bogs to create the vibrant community we now inhabit, our residents have shown resilience and strength. Congratulations on the 175th and best wishes for even more prosperity in our bright future. Best regards, MP Marilyn Gladu." The next is from Member of Parliament Leanne Rood, which reads, "Sincere congratulations to Lampton County on the occasion of your 175th anniversary in June 2024. This milestone is a testament to the enduring spirit and contributions of the residents of Lampton County, shaping a legacy that continues to inspire and unite communities across the region." Leanne Rood, MP, Lampton, Kent, Middlesex. We also received a message from the Governor General on the 175th. "I am pleased to extend warm greetings to everyone celebrating the 175th anniversary of the Corporation of the County of Lampton. Since it was formed in 1849, Lampton County has welcomed a great number of individuals and families who together have cared for the community, found ingenious ways to ensure its prosperity and help preserve its rich heritage. The residents of Lampton County, past and present, can be proud of their many accomplishments and essential contributions to the vitality of the region. May all of you enjoy the festivities and continue to make your home a place of openness and diversity. Congratulations on this impressive milestone, Mary Simon." Throughout 2024, the county will be marking the 175th anniversary milestone with a variety of events and activities. Today, we will be kicking off these celebrations by recognizing the contributions of 27 individuals and groups as heritage champions for their contributions to the preservation and promotion of the rich heritage of Lampton County. These champions have been identified by their communities for demonstrating remarkable commitment to the conservation, restoration, and promotion of our local heritage and identity. Today, we celebrate the invaluable contributions of these champions who have worked tirelessly to safeguard Lampton County's heritage for generations to come. I'll ask Andrew Meyer, our General Manager of Cultural Services, and Laurie Webb, our Manager of Museums, Gallery, and Archives, to join me as we recognize our heritage champions.
Okay, our first heritage champion is Alan Campbell. Alan is being recognized for his dedicated support of the local Ontario Genealogical Society branch, representing families from across Lampton County.
Congratulations, Alan. Our next recipient is the Arcona Lions Club, and they will be represented today by Adam Vishneski. Adam?
Our our next heritage champion is Bill Dr. Masonry, represented by Will Doctor. Bill Dr. Masonry is being recognized for the most recent project involving the restoration of a historic commercial building at 599 Broadway Street in Wyoming.
Congratulations, Will. Our next recipients, and I'll call them both up, Charlie Fairbank and Pat McGee. If you could please come forward. Charlie was nominated by Inniskillen Township for his work in drawing attention to the oil history of Inniskillen for over 50 years, engaging government, industry associations, media, educational institutions, and the community in preserving and celebrating Lampton's proud oil heritage. Pat McGee was nominated by Oil Springs for her work in advocating for the oil history of Oil Springs and working in collaboration with the county and the Oil Museum to raise awareness of the importance of Lampton's oil heritage. Congratulations to Charlie and Pat.
Next, we have George Smith, a posthumous nomination, and he's going to be represented by his daughter Liz Kenny. George is being recognized as an avid historian and local history author for his past work with the Lampton County Historical Society and heritage advocacy.
Congratulations to George, and thank you, Liz. Our next recipient is Greg Stott. Greg? Greg is being recognized for his work in promoting the history of Lampton County as an author and historian.
Our next champion is Helen Danby. Helen is being recognized for her work in researching and recording the history of the local Imperial Order of the Daughters of the Empire, the IODEe, chapters, and as a volunteer archivist with IODEe, Ontario.
Our next recipient is the Heritage St. Clair Committee, represented today by Tracy Kingston. Tracy? Heritage St. Clair is being recognized for their work in preserving and promoting the storied history of St. Clair Township, including heritage advocacy, programs and events, advisory support to the municipality, and community interpretive signage. Congratulations.
Next, we have John Rochon. John is being recognized for his work in local historical research and promoting the awareness of the history of Lampton County.
Congratulations, John. Next, we have Kip Cuthbert. Kip? Kip is being recognized for his work in researching and writing about stories of Sarnia in Lampton County for over 50 years.
Next, we have the Kiwanis Club of Forest, represented by Dan Bernard. The Kiwanis Club is being recognized for their work in rehabilitating and expanding the 107-year-old Canetto Theater and Forest in a manner that celebrates the rich history of the theater in the community.
Next, we have Christina Stalmach. Christina? Christina is being recognized for her promotion of Polish-Canadian heritage and the experiences of Polish immigrants through research, tours, and exhibitions across Lampton County. Congratulations, Christina.
Next, we have Lampton County Developmental Services, being represented by Jane Joris.
Next, we have the Lampton Agricultural Hall of Fame, represented by Joanne Sanderson. Joanne? The Lampton Hall of Fame is being recognized for their work in honoring the individuals, organizations, and businesses that have had a positive influence on agriculture and the rural community within Lampton County. Congratulations.
Next, we have the Lampton Shores Fragmites Community Group, being represented by Derek Scott. They're being recognized for their leadership as a volunteer group working with organizations to preserve the natural heritage of Lampton County through the removal and control of invasive fragmites.
And next, we have Marg Scott from the Village of Point Edward. Marg? Marg is being recognized for her work in preserving the history of the Village of Point Edward and making research and historical artifacts available at the Point Edward Library, where she used to work. Congratulations, Marg.
Next, we have Marjorie Cumming. Marjorie is being recognized for her work in promoting the history of Brooke Alvinston and her work with the Lampton County Historical Society.
Next, we have another local couple that work together to advocate for our heritage here in Lampton County, Mary and Paul James. Mary and Paul? Mary and Paul are being awarded for volunteering their time and talents to preserving the heritage of Warwick Township through research, the scanning of old photos, contributions to historical publications, and the development of video projects celebrating local history. Congratulations, Paul and Mary.
Next, we have Next, we have the Plimpton, Wyoming Historical Society, represented by Gord Mackenzie. The Plimpton, Wyoming Historical Society is being recognized for their dedication to the preservation of the history of Plimpton, Wyoming, through the museum site and a variety of community events and programs.
Next, we have Ray Lloyd. Ray? Ray is being recognized for his work with the Lampton County Historical Society and his passionate collecting to preserve the history of Lampton County. Congratulations, Ray.
Our next heritage champion is Shelley Lucier Lord. Shelley is being recognized for her past and current work with the Sombra Museum, supporting the museum's collections, exhibits, events, and programs.
Next, we have Shirley Periam. Shirley? Shirley is being recognized for her many years of work in preserving and promoting the heritage of Arcona and area. Congratulations, Shirley.
Next, we have Steve Lockston. Steve is being recognized for his local heritage advocacy efforts and for his work on the preservation of the Cauldrain Bridge.
Congratulations, Steve. And last, but certainly not least, among our participants today, we have the Siddeham Antique Club, represented today by Kelly Humphrey. Kelly? The Siddeham Antique Club is being recognized today for their work in celebrating rural heritage in Donufemia through the annual Grand Ole Power Days event. Congratulations, Kelly. We would also like to acknowledge, although not present with us today, Liz Walsh was recognized for her work within the town of Petrolia through the Petrolia Heritage Advisory Committee, Lampton County Historical Society, and Petrolia Discovery. She was not able to join us today due to an illness, but we will make sure that we have a presentation for Liz at a later date. At this time, we would like to call the 27 heritage champions to the front of our council chambers, and we're going to take a photo with Warden Marriott, and then we'll invite you to attend your tour of the Lampton County Archives Vault as we proceed with our regular council session. So if you're able to make your way to the front, we'll ask you to come around to where the warden is standing here, and we'll get a group photo with the heritage champions. Congratulations once again to all of you for being recognized by your communities for the work that you do. Thank you. Okay, congratulations once again, folks, and thank you for being part of our special day today. You're welcome to follow Nicole Azalis. Nicole, if I could get you to wave. Nicole will take you on a tour of the vault if you're interested. And at this time, we're actually going to call our current council members to the front for a group photo of the 175th Council, and then we'll break for a few moments before in-camera. So once the space clears out, if we can invite our current council to the same spot.
Congratulations, folks. Congrats.
Dean, so if you need to use the washroom, go ahead.
We will resume our meeting, and I would look for a motion to go in-camera. Moved by Counselor Hand and seconded by Counselor Sageman. All in favor? That's carried in. We'll be doing that in Committee Room 3 this time. Welcome back. You may recognize a different face at the front staff here. I'd like to introduce and congratulate Mr. Michael Gorgi on his new role as General Manager of the Long Term Care Division, effective as of Monday, June the 3rd, following Jane Joris' retirement on May 31st. Welcome, Mike. Please join me now for a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. I'd ask Ms. Lajeve to rise and report from the in-camera, please.
Yes, thank you, Warden Marriott. I can report that Lampton County Council met in camera this morning for approximately five minutes to address a few matters. First being to review and approve Lampton County Council closed session minutes of May 1st, 2024. Second, to review and approve the committee of the whole closed session minutes of May 15th, 2024. That included receiving a report and providing instructions with respect to a proposed acquisition in the city of Sarnia. Receiving a report providing instructions regarding negotiations between the county and a third party with respect to a development project. And then lastly, County Council provided instructions regarding collective bargaining with Launa. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no delegations today, so I'll look for a motion to adopt the minutes of open session of May the 1st, please. Counselor Dennis, sorry, Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Sageman. All in favor? That's carried. Thanks. Item number 14, Board of Health, Dr. Duick. Item A is correspondence to receive and file. Do we have a motion to adopt those? Counselor Cook and Counselor Loosely seconds, all in favor? Let's carry. Item number B, information reports. There's three information reports. If there's any questions, otherwise I'd look for a motion to receive and file all three. Counselor Agar and Counselor Atkinson seconds, all in favor? Let's carry. Anything else for public health, Board of Health? Oh, Counselor Bradley, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. A question to the medical officer of health. There's been a number of overdoses in the community the last week or two, and have been told it's there's a a number of very bad drugs out there that are going through the community. Do you and your staff know how many overdoses there have there been? And will there be an alert put out about, and it has happened in the past, there has been alerts put out when there's a a very dangerous nasty mixture of drugs in the community, so people are at least aware that it's out there.
Dr. Duick, please.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Counselor Bradley. Yes, we maintain a rolling average of the number of EMS calls we receive around opioid overdoses. At the end of May into the beginning of June, that rolling average was higher than in previous months. And as such, on May 31st, we sent an alert to our first responders, emergency department, and naloxone distribution sites, letting them know that we are seeing more overdose calls and hearing anecdotal reports of overdoses, and reminded them about the steps to ensure that people are equipped who they work with in the event of an overdose. A key component of that is having naloxone and knowing how to give it safely. Again, after the weekend, we received anecdotal reports about overdoses and continue to look at a rolling average and issued another alert to those individuals that we had reached out to before. And also notified the ministry at the provincial level, who keeps track of all of the alerts across the province. Provincially, the trend is similar to what we're seeing here. We do not suspect any new drugs apart from those that are already known to be in the toxic drug supply, that being fentanyl, a key one, xylazine and other tranquilizers, and benzodiazepines that are using, being used not as intended and are toxic. It's hard to know what's in the drugs.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. Now, does that alert go out to the public also, or is it just an internal first responder alert?
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Counselor Bradley. We have a policy and procedure about the opioid alert. It is a mandated protocol from the ministry to determine when to issue an alert. In this circumstance, a public alert or media release was determined not to be the best course of action due to the fact that we did not have knowledge about a specific new drug, and we know already that there are toxic substances in the unregulated supply, and this continues to be the fact of the matter today.
Okay, could you send out that rolling average? Because there's momentum building in the city to do something more substantial than just the responses. So is it possible to have that sent out to us just as a high-level statistic?
Through you, Warden, to Counselor Bradley. I will check with our epidemiologist and mental health and addictions coordinator, who maintain the rolling average. We do need to consider the personal health information components of any data that we collect and release. And so I will get back to you with a response on that question.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Duick? Seeing none? Thank you, Dr. Duick. Yeah, okay, so I just want to make sure that we did take the vote on receiving and file. We did. So item number 15, we have no correspondence today, and that takes us to item number 16, information reports, Social Services Division. We have an information report dated June the 5th regarding supportive housing partner update. Look for a motion to receive and file, Counselor Veen and Deputy Warden White. Any discussion? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And item number 17, motion to receive and file the Sarnia-Lampton Economic Partnership Board minutes dated March the 26th, 2024. Counselor Cook and Counselor Sageman seconds, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And number 18, reports requiring a motion under Social Services Division. Report dated June the 5th regarding Victoria Street parking lot. Do we have a motion? Counselor McRoberts, seconded by Counselor Sageman. Discussion? Counselor McRoberts.
Through the Warden, it was important for the city to add that the parking lot would retain some public parking for downtown businesses, employees that depend on that parking spot. So if we can maybe work on something where the city retains ownership and the county owns the building or something going forward, we cannot afford to give up all of those parking spots. If we can have a discussion about that, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Ms. Colaseni, would you be prepared to comment on that? Thank you.
Through you, Warden Marriott, to Counselor McRoberts. Certainly, we can have that conversation. I think what we're asking now is how many parking spots would you need? And perhaps you'd look at severing off some of the property to use that for parking, and then the county would develop on the balance of the property that would be donated to us. That's sort of what we were coming back with.
Follow-up, Counselor McRoberts?
Thank you. I think the plan is brilliant. The spots are brilliant. And I think that that's something that the city of Sarnia has to go back to their council and our council and decide. But the parking is important.
I think I have Counselor Bradley and then Deputy Warden White.
Now, this is really frustrating. We offered this parking lot a year ago. Year ago. And these issues should have been resolved by now between the two staffs to say, look, this is the package, because we need to get on with this. And that's the frustration. And then to read the comments in general about the liability of parking, well, county, city, we have liabilities on many, many different issues. I just want to get some sense of urgency to resolving this. You know, by the time it gets back to city council and then back to the county council, you know, we're losing months and months on moving forward and keeping to our own goal of getting projects done within 18 months. And that's more of an editorial comment. I don't have any other action to propose, but let's just get this moving as quickly as possible.
Okay. Deputy Warden White?
Thank you, Warden. I agree with Counselor Bradley. And just to reiterate, you know, I think if I had to prioritize the two, I would certainly look at the housing as being critical. We can deal with parking if we need to. However, I do think there are ways that we can manipulate the builds to create a little bit of a severance opportunity here, just to accommodate a little bit of parking. We at the city did just add more parking at our meeting two days ago. And I do think that if our teams can collaborate and put the best ideas together, we can probably find other parking solutions as well, not just on that site, but certainly in close proximity. But if I had to prioritize housing first, we can, you know, we can, we need to build something. We can figure parking out.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Dennis?
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I voted against the proposal from day one. I think that my colleagues are reading the room totally wrong. I think they're going to find that out in two and a half years. The vast, vast majority of downtown businesses are against this. We need quality investment in downtown Sarnia. We do not need a place of this magnitude in smack right in the middle of downtown Sarnia. It is, it attracts the wrong sort, if you will. It is not what the downtown Sarnia needs. We need to attract quality investment. The downtown Sarnia is reeling from what is occurring in Rainbow Park right now. And people are waiting till the end of their leases to leave downtown Sarnia because of a lack of leadership and courage. And so parking spots be darned. I don't think we're going to need much parking spots, because I think everybody is going to be leaving downtown because of the lack of business acumen and the lack of the bonehead decisions that have been made the last couple of months, quite frankly, so.
Okay. Please keep your comments to the specifics of this.
I am talking to the specifics of this.
No, you're not. You're talking about politics that don't involve what we're talking about. Okay, so.
This does talk about this. This is a, we have a neighborhood that is seething that feels that, quite frankly, they don't matter, that a group of people are taking precedent over tax-paying, hard-working citizens.
Okay, we'll move on, Counselor Dennis. We could.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments before I call the vote? All in favor of the motion on the floor? Those opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Office of the CAO, we have a report dated June the 5th regarding city-county agreement for, on 2024 renewal. Motion, motion for this? Counselor Atkinson? Counselor Loosely? Comments? Counselor Bradley, did you?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Opposed if any? That's carried. And item B, report dated June the 5th, 2024 regarding the County of Lampton strategic plan. Motion to approve this recommendation. Counselor Sageman and Deputy Warden White, all in favor? That's carried. Thanks. Item number 19, Committee of the Whole minutes. Motion to adopt the minutes dated May the 15th. Counselor Hand and Counselor Miller seconds, all in favor? That's carried. No items tabled from previous meetings? Oh, sorry, Counselor Agar.
Motion number 12, I was told during the committee of the whole that I couldn't request a recorded vote, that we had to wait for open council, so I would like to request that now, if it's possible.
Okay. So will, Ms. Lajeve will be able to repeat the motion? Go ahead, Ms. Lajeve.
So the motion on the floor is that staff provide a report on the percentage of payments made by each municipality to the county budget and the percentage of services each municipality receives in return for those contributions on a high-level basis.
Is that clear to council?
So we have a recorded vote requested by Counselor Agar, starting with Counselor McRoberts. I have a no. Counselor Miller?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counselor Sageman?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Veen?
Yes.
I have a yes. Deputy Warden White?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Agar?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counselor Atkinson?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counselor Bushy is absent. Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counselor Broad?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Case?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counselor Cook?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Dennis?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counselor Ferguson?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Hand?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Loosely?
No.
I have a no. And Warden Marriott?
Yes.
I have a yes. That motion passes. That motion passes.
Okay, anything else from the, from the Committee of the Whole minutes? So we have no items tabled from previous meetings, no notice of motion. Brings us to other business. Counselor Lucely.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. But first of all, I want to congratulate you and Mr. Meyer on the successful one seventy-five this morning. I thought it was a great event. But to add to that, I want to remind all of County Council of Petrolia's one fifty. And we have a number of events coming up. We'd love to have the county councillors take part. And I just want to also welcome county councillors and staff to join me with the Mayor's Walk every Tuesday at six o'clock, starting from the Y. And the reason I'm mentioning that is the town is now competing with the participation for the month of June, and of course, the municipality that does have the most participation could win a hundred thousand dollars. So anyway, I'd like to have you come out. I want to thank Mayor Todd for coming out yesterday for the walk. You get a little history along the way, but again, there's many events coming up in Petrolia for celebrating our one fifty, and I invite all council to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Deputy Warden White?
Yeah, Counselor Lucely, is that six AM?
Six PM.
Okay, one more time, any other business? Oh, Counselor Bradley, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm in this Hollywood Square situation this morning. Thank you very much for accommodating me. This is a resolution that was sent out to County Council yesterday from the city council meeting on Monday. And if you didn't receive it, it says, Sarnia City Council requests comments from Lampton Public Health and the County of Lampton Social Service Division regarding the provision of sanitation services at Rainbow Park and/or any other encampments in the city to determine their support for such services in the park. And these comments would be requested to July, to the July eighth meeting of Sarnia City Council. I'd like to move that, and if there's a second or just one more addition I'd like to make to it.
Okay, we have a second or by Christian, I'm sorry, by Counselor McRoberts. Discussion?
The only, Mr. Warden, the only thing I'd like to add to this is there is a deadline, a date here of July the eighth. If this could be expedited, the discussions between city, county, public health, police, you name it, if it could be expedited and brought back quicker and in just a general way to us, that would be very, very helpful, given the situation we're in.
Okay, first I have Counselor Agar and then Counselor Ferguson for.
Thank you. I read that letter too. And in my thoughts, the washrooms part of the deal is not a county mandate. I know we have to supply shelter, which we do. I'm not in favor myself of putting washrooms, and we have staff that work twenty-four, seven hours at the shelters, and I commend them on what they do. And I don't know, I just, I think it would prolong more if we're going to put restrooms in the, in the park. So I for one am against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ferguson, please.
Thank you, Warden. Again, I'd like to commend staff for the work they're doing, working with the homeless and the hours they're putting in. I don't think that's being recognized by people in the county and by both councils, Sarnia and Lampton County Council. And I think it's been explained multiple times that there is spaces available within Lampton for the people that wish to go there. We can't make them. You start to supply washrooms, one, it is a city of Sarnia Park. That is not our mandate, supply sanitation into somebody else's park. If we're going to do that, I got places in Brook Township I would like the county to bring in some sanitation for, and some other parks in the county. This is a Sarnia problem in a Sarnia park. We're supplying the house, the home already for them, and the spaces that are available have been reiterated multiple times. I'm dead against this. When you put that in there, your Sarnia council, your problem is going to stay there. You're going to make it that much bigger. Thank you.
Counselor Bradley and then Counselor Dennis.
Just to respond to this, this is a human health crisis, and the county has been mandated not just to deal with housing, but the homeless. You just announced ten million dollars that you've spent over the last number of years. But that's not the motion. Read the motion. It is simply, and it's a fair motion, because it's not saying do it. It's asking where the county and the social service agencies and where do the other agencies stand on having this type of step taken? And we're not taking the step right now ourselves. We're just asking the county, as the facilitator of a number of these services, where would you stand and tell us what your input is, just as there was input sought last year on encampments themselves? And the notice, the word back from the county and the police at the time was, don't do it. So we didn't do it. This camp is not something we sanctioned or put in place, but there's also human needs now that impact on the neighborhood, impact on the people that are there. So we're just asking, give us your thoughts on this, bring it back to us as quickly as possible. It's not asking you to take a stand on doing it.
Counselor Dennis.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. Again, going back to when the CAO and Ms. Calasanti came to Sarnia Council, they did a wonderful job explaining what it is that they have done to accommodate those lost souls. Mrs. or Ms. Calasanti made it quite clear that there is plenty of room, plenty of room in the shelters, and that she would bend over backwards to accommodate people with special needs. The last meeting of Sarnia Council, one councillor said that they aren't accessible spaces. They, and she said at the meeting, or before, the prior meeting, that she would bend over backwards to accommodate. These people live in tents. Anything other than a tent is not great, quite frankly. And what my, my colleagues at Sarnia Council are really saying is any, any place these people go that they can't smoke their dope at is not acceptable, in my opinion. And this is wrong. If, if, if the county basically supplies washrooms to these people, you're basically condoning encampments, is what, in my humble opinion. This, this is wrong. Sarnia Council has had an opportunity on more than one occasion to show some leadership to evict these people, and they hide behind, they hide, they, they don't show, show leadership. And, and this problem has mushroomed, mushroomed into something larger. They, they have no regard for the neighbors. They have no regard for the downtown businesses. They, for whatever reason, they just, they don't have any regard for the, for the disruption this is causing the neighbors, the downtown businesses. They, they, they are totally MIA when it comes to leadership and, and, and empathy for the, the real victims, which are the neighbors and the downtown businesses.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Dennis. I think we have one more. Counselor Bean.
And members of County Council. I guess, I got to ask the question, like, the county has done just about everything we can do, and I, I'm going to ask the question, what is Sarnia actually doing to try and fix their own problem? Because this is your park. It's not our park. And I'm just kind of wondering, like, why haven't we either tried to push these people out or find another spot for them if, if this Rainbow Park isn't where you want them? I, I mean, there is a couple avenues, and I, and I got to ask that question. What is Sarnia doing?
We won't try and answer that question at this time. Well, if there's no more comments, I'll call the question on the, on the motion.
Yeah, I would request a recorded vote, because I think the motion's being misunderstood. It's just looking for input.
Okay, so I believe Counselor Dennis and Counselor Bradley requested that, so. Bradley, can we read the, the motion? Counselor Bradley, would you like to reread the communication that was distributed so we?
Yes, I certainly would be happy to do that. That Sarnia City Council requests comments from Lampton Public Health and the County of Lampton Social Services Division regarding the provision of sanitation services at Rainbow Park and/or other encampments in the city. And I would add into that now the county to determine their support for such services, and that these comments be brought back by early July.
Thank you.
So we have a recorded vote requested by Counselor Dennis and Counselor Bradley, starting at Counselor Hand. I have a yes. Counselor Lucely?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counselor McRoberts?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counselor Miller?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Sagman?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counselor Bean?
No.
I have a no. Deputy Warden White?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counselor Agar?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Atkinson? I have a no. Counselor Bushi is absent. Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counselor Broad?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Case?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Cook?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counselor Dennis?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Ferguson?
No.
I have a no. Warden Marriott? I have a no. That motion is defeated.
Any other business at this time? Seeing none, ask Ms. Legay for notice of bylaws, please.
Yes, thank you, Warden Marriott. It is moved by Counselor Lucely, seconded by Counselor Agar, that bylaw seventeen and eighteen of twenty twenty-four, as circulated, be taken as read for a first and second time.
All in favor? It's carried.
And it is moved by Counselor Lucely, seconded by Counselor Agar, that bylaw seventeen and eighteen of twenty twenty-four, as circulated, be taken as read as a third and final time.
All in favor? Let's carry it. Thank you. That brings us to adjournment. The next county council meeting will be Wednesday, July the third, twenty twenty-four, at nine AM. And I'd look for a motion to adjourn on that. Counselor Bean and Counselor Lucely seconds, all in favor? Let's carry it. And take note of the notes in the bottom before we join in O Canada.